Welcome to the November 5th, 2024 City Council Meeting, 6:30 in Lowell City Hall Chamber. We'll start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions to lead our state to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to take decisions which will be before the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please salute the flag. Pardons to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yen.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Gitcher.
Here.
It's time present.
Counselor Chow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request a moment of silence in darkened chamber for Siomphone Kam Sayivong, and also would like to welcome his family, his wife, his two young children, and his friends who are here, sitting in the chamber in the back. Cam was born October 3rd, 1985, passed away peacefully on October 15th, 2024, at the age of 39. Taken from us too soon by cancer, Cam was a beloved son, brother, husband, father, and friend, whose warmth, humor, and deep commitment to his community left a profound mark on everyone fortunate enough to know him. Today, as his family and friends gather in the City Hall chamber, we honor and celebrate a life that touched so many. Cam is survived by his devoted parents, Hudon Sayivong and Samsak Orunzi, his loving wife Allison Suksonchai, with whom he shared nearly two decades of love since 2005, and their cherished sons, Ezra, age eight, and Zane, age four. He is also lovingly remembered by his younger siblings, brother Anuson Sayivong, and sisters Manivon and Christina Sayivong, along with many aunts, uncles, cousins, nieces, and nephews, who are all touched by his kindness. A proud graduate of Lowell High School, Cam began a career in the medical device industry before following his entrepreneurial calling. With resilience and vision, he established a successful sports launch bar, a restaurant, real estate ventures, and a nail salon, endeavors that reflected his dedication to creating not only opportunities for his family, but also gathering spaces for his community. Cam was instrumental in encouraging Laos community engagement, supporting causes like Miss Laos New Year, the mayor's backpack drive, and was instrumental in organizing Lowell's first lunar New Year celebration here at City Hall. His love for his Laos heritage ran deep, and he was steadfast in his support for local Laos temples in Lowell and what Buddha Padhvanar in Westford. Cam also spearheaded annual book drive and ice cream social for students in Laos, sharing both his resources and his heart with those who needed it most. Cam's radiant personality could light up any room, and his generous spirit left an imprint on every heart he touched. With an extraordinary gift for bringing people together, Cam united friends, family, and community members from all walks of life, creating bonds that will endure even in his absence. He was an unwavering friend whose loyalty knew no bounds. His legacy lives on through the countless lives he touched, the love he so freely gave, and the unity he fostered within his community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any others? Mr. Clerk, please talk in the chamber. May he rest in peace. Section 2, Mayor's Business 2.1, Communication for Remote Zoom Participation. Motion accepted upon file by Counselor Belanger, seconded by Counselor Chow, all in favor of CI. Opposed motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk 3.1, Minutes of the Cannabis Control Subcommittee, October 29th, City Council Regular Meeting, October 29th, for acceptance. Motion accepted upon file by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Gitcher, all in favor of CI. Opposed motion passes. The motion by Counselor Mercier takes 7.1 out of order, seconded by Counselor Noon, all in favor of CI. Opposed motion passes. 7.1, An令to amend zoning extension TTF Zone 684 Westford Street. And the motion to refer to the planning board for a report recommendation to a public hearing on December 10th, 2024, by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Robinson. All in favor of CI. Opposed motion passes. Return to the agenda, Council motions. Section 4, Counselor Janess. Request City Manager of Department Investigate sidewalks on Prescott Street for tripping hazards and develop a plan to remediate, seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came out of the LDNA meeting last week. Somebody mentioned that there's quite a few spots that are trip hazards, and, you know, even they knew a few people who had tripped and fallen on some of these spots. So if we could just get it on the radar to have somebody go down there, take a look, and understand the issues, and try to build a plan so that we can remediate this. There's a lot of elderly folks in the area, so it's kind of imperative that we take care of this when we can. Thank you.
All in favor of CI. Opposed motion passes. Section 5, Communications 5.1A. Motion Response. Lowell Police Department Warning Regarding Brushing Scam. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank to the manager, particularly Chief Hudon, for the report. When this came about, I reached out to the chief, and, you know, he said that his department's on top of this, although this seemed to be a victimless crime, but it does impact on individual personal information, being compromised, so to speak. But the chief has been working on it, his team and his department, so I thank you for the report, and thank you for staying on top of this.
Deputy is here. Any questions for Deputy Gendron?
Well. The deputy is here. All right.
Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening. So, I mean, if you could, you know, give us a synopsis of the number of reports, particularly around the brush scam, and what step your department have done in terms of intervening and, you know, mitigate this issue. Thank you.
Counselor, we haven't had any documented incidents of brushing. Some area towns and cities have. There was a public safety announcement put out by the United States Postal Service identifying what you should do. Typically, a package is delivered to your home by an unknown third party, and there's no return address, or if there is, it may be bogus. Usually, it's a low-cost item, and they're doing this to boost sales of that product. And there's really no harm to you, but the thing we want to make sure people are looking out for is that their personal information may have been utilized to fill out a survey. So we want to make sure that people are vigilant and check their credit reports. And also, sometimes people have the package delivered, and then come to the home and take the package, steal the package.
In your department, Deputy Superintendent, your department, I put out an alert on that, and also what to not do in this kind of situation as well, right?
That's correct. Social media.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Moving on, Motion Response B, Public Safety at Lowell Housing Authority Properties. Counselors Robinson and Gitcher. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. I'd first like to say thank you for the quick turnaround on our response on this. I'm glad to see there are obviously efforts underway to address what's been going on over there. Some of the concerns, though, based on this response is, we have 10 campuses citywide, I believe, and one officer that's really assigned Monday to Friday, 7:30 to 3:30. I know it's supplemented by other areas of LPD, which is greatly appreciated. Some of the things, though, that I see is, I went through the five-year plan, and examining the five-year plan, some of these concerns have been raised, it's documented, back in June, and it says this five-year plan is going to be, in part, concerns of the residents will be baked into this five-year plan. I don't see much in the way of Bishop Markham specifically, or South Common Village, or whatever, baked in the five-year plan. In one instance, the concern of cameras for Bishop Markham was raised, and they pretty much were told, "We're looking to put them in another area because they're just simply older." Whereas, I mean, we're all aware, it's been, that there's been overrun and overwhelmed, is, I think, the words that were used. And so I think if that's the situation over there, anything maybe we can do to assist and bolster the efforts that are underway to address this situation, I'd be all ears to hear and see what can we do to help combat some of the stuff that they're contending with over in the Bishop Markham area currently. Thank you.
Counselor Gitcher.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I thank Superintendent Hudon for providing us with this. You know, questions are that, when you read the report, you ask, "Why do we have one officer only down at the Mercier Center during the day, Monday through Friday? Why aren't they over at the hotspots on second shift in the other areas?" When you have 10 of them, Bishop Markham's seems like a big one, and in the report, it basically says that it hasn't even, it tends to go up when it's cold outside. So that's one question. When we look at back when all this was done, and I know the Housing Authority at one point used to do what they called the "one-strike law," and I'm not sure why we're not doing that. They say we don't, but it says, "When you go back to the mid-'90s, this statement was made. Make no mistake about it, in public housing, drugs are public enemy number one. We must have zero tolerance for people who deal drugs. They are the most vicious, who prey on the most vulnerable. They are the jailers who imprison the elderly. They are the seducers who tempt the imprisonment of the young. They push over the impressionable young. They must be stopped. One strike and you're out is doing just that." And then, as we read, there are ways of removing people like this. You can look at the applications, and it doesn't have to be the person who's renting, it can be a relative who keeps visiting the place who has the issue. So I'm just hoping, and I know that at one point, the Housing Authority used to push this, and I'm not sure when the last time we've had a case that actually we pushed it away, but I know that HUD has a application form that it's supposed to be part of. So all we're asking for is what we outline every time the Housing Authority comes before us: partnership. We talk about partnership over and over again, and all people asking for is a partnership. Scan your applications. If somebody's coming in here, you have laws on the books that can force them away from these areas. And I'm not saying, you know, throw everybody out, but if somebody's bringing drugs in and pushing certain things, and there's elderly and everybody else in there, why can't we protect them? That's what President Clinton, back in 1995, did. President Clinton introduced the one-strike guidelines, said hard-working, law-abiding people who live in public housing should not be fearful of gang members and drug dealers in their apartment building. One-strike sends a message that if you have messed up your community, you have to turn in your keys. If you insist on abusing, or intimidating, or hunting other people, you'll have to live somewhere else. That was President Clinton back in 1995, and it's been on the books. I know that for some, "one-strike and you're out" sounds like a hardball. Well, it is. It is because it's morally wrong for criminals to use up homes that could make a big difference in the lives of decent families. That was President Clinton who said that, not me. HUD guidelines suggest that public housing authorities conduct extensive background checks on applicants and their family members, and develop strict rules to find out about applicants' involvement in drug or criminal activity. And it goes on to say that if somebody is already renting there, that you have a one-strike law, and we need to start enforcing it. Who are we protecting if we're allowing deviants to just come in and do the deals and everything, and open doors and stuff like that? So I'm hoping that the Housing Authority becomes our partner, and starts enforcing these things, so we don't have to use our police force in this way, every day in and day out, every night. And that's what our hope is, and I'm hoping that they use the laws on the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this, Counselor Dakota?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Not Vice Mayor, Counselor Mercier. Sorry about that. I do see a couple of people from the Lowell Housing Authority, State Representative Elliott and Mr. Mercier. I was wondering, concerning broken doors and everything that's happening, and they're finding the homeless people down in their basement, are there cameras on the outside near those doorways?
Mr. Oh, State Rep. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. I appreciate you standing up.
You're welcome. Thank you. My name's Rodney Elliott. I'm actually here with another hat tonight. I'm the Commissioner on the Board, Board of Directors for the Housing Authority. And so, just to clarify some things, the Housing Authority is an able and willing partner of the city, and we collaborate all the time, at every avenue. But let me be clear, we take serious the screening and thorough examination of individuals that are going into the Housing Authority. No one's coming in without a thorough background check. The notion that we're letting people in that are, you know, dealing drugs is, it's not true, and that's not the case at all whatsoever. The challenge that we face now, by the way, there are 35 cameras at Bishop Markham. There are nine complexes, there are nine buildings at Bishop Markham, and there are 35 cameras. Dennis has them on his phone. Dennis was the property manager for eight years. He's now in charge of all of the facilities, and he can come up to speak a little bit more. This is not a new problem. It's a growing problem. We try and exhaust every possible avenue we can to protect the residents there. We're not neglecting it. We're not ignoring it. Just over this past, we have replaced six basement bulkhead, steel doors. Six. They just come and they break them, if you can imagine. They broke into the precinct this weekend, the police precinct. So, and I got a couple of calls about, "Well, why isn't it key-carded?" It is key-carded, and they broke that this weekend. So, the individuals, let's say homeless, that are there now, they're becoming more aggressive. The executive director was in one building and asked, you know, asked an individual that did not live there this past week, "Could you please leave the premises?" And he told him to go blank himself. So, that's the element that the Housing Authority is dealing with. We go to every extent that we possibly can to protect the people that live there. The second part of the problem are residents that have guests. They have guests, they're allowed to have guests. They're not allowed to have their guests stay over, but it happens. You know, two years ago, was it two years ago, Dennis? The Housing Authority, so we talk about partnership. The Housing Authority did hire security guards, full-time. It was $1,600 a week, and they got concerned, and what did they do? They called the police. So that really wasn't something that was working. The issue of funding, as Counselor Gitcher called me Sunday, it's not an issue of funding. We're not swimming in money over there. There are, we have financial, you know, challenges like everyone else, so that's not the case. The case is, we have, this is where the rubber meets. We do not have arresting authority, arresting powers at the Lowell Housing Authority. So when the property manager is there, or the assistant property manager, we can't, even if we want to have security, we cannot arrest them. We have to call the police, which is why we asked for a precinct over there. You know, years ago, the gang unit worked out of the Mercier Center. That one officer now is at that police precinct. We need more officers. We are vigilant. We are doing everything we can, and this and every complex, and protecting every individual there. But, and by the way, we do prosecute. We go to land, we go to housing court. We're housing court every week, trying to evict individuals, and, you know, these days, the judge is reluctant to, you know, to evict these individuals. They could, we have one case going on for six months. But I just wanted to come before you to let you know, and the people watching, and the residents in not only Bishop Markham, but the other 10 complexes, we're watching. There are cameras, there are cameras everywhere, and, as I mentioned, we are vigilant, and we're making sure that we protect as best as we can, and we are. There's not much we can do, and the police are arresting, by the way, but the judges are letting them out. And that's a problem. So, I don't, if there are any questions, we're happy, pleased. We'd love you to come to our meeting if you have, if you have more concerns than what we're doing. But, you know, you mentioned the consolidated plan, and part of that plan is a partnership to protect these people, and we are doing it. There is absolutely no neglect to these residents, and we need help from the police department when we do. But it has, it has become a monumental challenge. We even went to the fire department to close the gate, to reduce the traffic coming from South Common, essentially to, you know, to J's, and understandably so. We don't dispute, you can't close them because that compromises public safety. So, you know, Dennis, if there's no objection, Dennis can probably come to speak to more specifics, if you'd like. He knows the area well, and this is, this is the culmination. It's been happening for a while, and we're doing as much as we can. But it's, unfortunately, it's residents, they're either breaking in, or residents are letting them in, or they're guests, and we're doing as much as we can. And, Dennis?
Counselor Belanger, Dakota, and Robinson. Go to Counselor Belanger first.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Dakota slides the floor.
I apologize. I was.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question to the city manager. Counselor Gitcher had brought it up. Right now, we have someone there from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Is that the most efficiency in time? I'm thinking maybe we go to a 3:00 to 11:00 shift, maybe, over there? Maybe utilize our time a little better through the police department, and hopefully, you know, once again, being a good partner.
Deputy?
Counselor, just this week, we reassigned the housing officer to a split shift, four on, two off schedule. He was Monday through Friday, now he's four on, two off, two days, two evenings. And we also reassigned him to the Neighborhood Response Unit, so he's the sole dedicated officer to the Housing Authority, but he will work in conjunction with the Neighborhood Response Unit, which has three supervisors and eight police officers assigned to it, four officers on each shift, Platoon 2 and Platoon 3. So we think that'll be a great help.
Appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Counselor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the motion, as well as the motion response. I mean, we have gotten a number of complaints from residents within this facility, particularly Bishop Markham, and we need to take action, and that's what we're trying to do. So, that being said, I do appreciate Commissioner Members Elliott and Mercier coming down here tonight. But it seems like, out of the 10 campuses that Lowell Housing has in our city, Bishop Markham is by far the most problematic. And in my estimation, there was one reason for it: South Common. Okay? Just in the last few months, we've had the owner of the keep in here, the owner of the aisle diner, and several residents come in and speak. Okay? And from Member Elliott's comments as to the break-in and entering that's going on there, number of bulkheads have happened and been replaced, a number of key-card replacements have happened and been replaced, that sounds to me more like an outside problem than it is the residents within the building. That being said, it goes back to South Common. Now, we defended these previous businesses that I mentioned previously, wholeheartedly. So, the Housing Authority here, point being, is just another casualty at what's going on at South Common. So, in the name of consistency, we need to clean up that park and do continued every effort we are making. The problem is the outside of the building more than the residents on the inside. They're the ones that affected, they're the ones that are complaining to us. So we need to come to a solution. Could one of the board members please come up to the podium, whether it's Member Elliott or Mercier, like to ask a few questions, please?
Yeah, Dennis. Mercy at Lowell Housing Authority.
Thank you, Dennis. I mean, could you confirm that the Bishop Markham facility is your most problematic as you sit here tonight? Is that a fact?
Yes, all of our housing properties, that's the most active.
Yep. Thank you very much. Is there any, is there a possibility of any type of HUD funding for police, Lowell Police Detail at all?
No, the Housing Authority has in the past, and Deputy Gendron can, we have done some money to bring on special details. We pay overtime to the offices.
Yep.
But those funds are very low. There's really no funding that we're getting that we're able to, to be able to add more policemen.
Right.
We tried to get some security funding, but we didn't get the grant.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So you would have to cut into your operating budget or take money from elsewhere to put towards this problem, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's sort of what, cities in the same position, Commissioner. I hear you. Thank you, Commissioner Mercier. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, what, you've been in discussions with the Housing Authority. What kind of, we have, we began to formulate a game plan here, whether we pool some resources. I mean, they're on the hook too. I'm not totally relieved. But my point being is, South Common, we own most of this problem. Okay? It's the behavior that's going on at South Common, again. So with that being said, is there any kind of game plan to what's going on, to combine funding for, what we need is more than one officer, 7:00 to 3:00. We need set three to four, you know, at least a month program, solid round-the-clock, 24/7 police, to clean this place up, especially before the winter settles in. So, that being said, where are we at with that, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. Counselor, we have been, I've been talking directly with the director, Director from the LHA, and they've been very helpful. They're looking for funding, as we have been. I know that Deputy, the deputy has mentioned this evening that we have changed some times for that, from that perspective. We've had, as everything is stated here in the response, we've had the Neighborhood Response Unit over there. I do think we're going to start to see a little bit more of a cleanup. We've deployed one of our cameras over in the J's parking lot.
Yep.
And I do know that LPD has been doing everything that they can, especially from the perspective of changing from the 7:00 to 3:00 to the split shift that the deputy had explained. We've been in constant contact. Director Chan and I, it's very easy to speak with him, back and forth, his whole team, whether it be Dennis, or Mark, or any of them, to see how we can augment or try to assist. And I have to say that the LPD has really continued to step up and help with this. There's a lot of aggressive folks that are over in that area. I think that the deputy knows that. And there's a lot of, we've been aggressive on the other side with our co-op folks.
Yep.
Our co-op folks have been in and out every single day, trying to invite and trying to give that. to give that assistance to people. We do know that winter is coming. We know that that's a problem. But we're being, I guess, just as aggressive in a good way to try to solve their challenges and their problems, to get them reunited with their family. We, we're not a city that just puts people on a bus and says, "Good luck." We make sure that there's somebody, a warm handoff. So that has all been happening daily for the last, well, it happened, it's been happening continuously, but we've really ramped it up over the last month. So there's a lot going on there. The deputy is here to speak on behalf of the LPD. I think they've been doing a fabulous job. I have to say Lowell Housing Authority has been an incredible partner. So we'll find resources as well as, I'm sure, the LHA and we'll continue to buckle down in that area.
Okay. Well, thank you. It seems like there's a very good partnership going on to formulating a game plan here. But how about, Mr. Manager, on our side of the house? Is it possible we can come up with some overtime funds? They come up with some funds somehow, some way, again, for that, all our policing effort round-the-clock, three, four weeks, a month solid. You know, that's what I envision, to clean this place up. I really do. So that being said, thank you to all those involved, to the housing authority, folks that came in tonight. But to summarize this, this is, the unfortunate reality is, the city's responsible to police the Lowell Housing Authority. That's the unfortunate reality here. And this is, and I don't recall my previous tenure on the council, I don't ever have a problem, anything like this, even remotely close to this. Or, and there are nine other properties that resembles this. So that one, so what stands out here? Again, South Common, which is our problem. We own it. We need to find an answer. But they are a partner in this too, Mr. Manager. I'm not relieving anybody. But please, continue your talks with the housing authority and let's get to a solution and clean this place up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Like I said earlier, I'm glad to see that there's all eyes on this problem and we're working collaboratively to address this challenge. Some of the things, though, that are being said, I think is incorrect. I think, yes, for sure, it's smack dab in the middle. We're moving them from Summer Street, they're filtering into the Back Central. Unfortunately, this housing project is smack dab in the middle. We're getting the influx from both ends. I've had residents reach out via email where there were units in there that are also a draw from the Summer Street crowd that are actively dealing. Going through the HUD requirements here, not, it doesn't have to be the resident that's actually partaking. It says, under the HUD guidelines, it can be visitors, guests, anybody that's involved in illegal activity that's infringing on the right to a quality of life for the community, for the most part. How many evictions have even been processed? I noticed since June that we've been combating this situation. Since June, have there been a lot of evictions or started evictions for people that are partaking in this kind of activity? Because again, it's, there is a draw in the building and it's not all buildings. I know the medical building, I haven't heard peep. I've spoke to quite a few people that live in the medical building and there's no problems in that one. They're saying the one with the precinct is probably ground zero. And that location right there, I mean, I get it. It's, we're all strapped for resources and we can't just throw 15 police officers. We're short-staffed as well on the city side as far as staffing levels go. And I know you don't have the blank check to throw at this problem, but have there been evictions begun process from June out of all the arrests that I mentioned, even in the report?
Mr. Mercia?
Yes, out of the entire housing authority, we've had a few evictions, actually probably about 12 of them over the summer months. Some of them for non-payment of rent, some of them for lease violations. I can speak specifically to Bishop Markham. I started a case there for one of these problem units that are allowing the guests to come in into the unit. We started the case about a year and a half ago and it's still going through the court process. And as Counsel Gitchi mentioned, the one-strike rule is, ends up being what the judge thinks it's going to be. If it's a drug problem with the tenant and we bring a one-strike, he sends it to mediation because they're looking at that as a health or a mental health issue. If it's a violent crime or a violent attack, then we've been, we've actually had two in the past three months where the judge allowed that one-strike to go forward. They're very wary of taking on a one-strike, especially if it's not a violent crime. And at the end of the day, it's what the judge thinks the ruling says, not what HUD said. So right now, we probably have 120 cases in the courts. I would say, off the top of my head, maybe 20 of them are lease violations for live-ins, for allowing homeless people into the hallways and stuff. But it's, like I said, this one here has been a year and a half and the court is still telling us to go into mediation and give them more chances. And that's all we can do. We can't physically throw them out until the court allows us to. And we would have no problem at all doing that to a troubled tenant because they're ruining the whole building. We're very, very active in the courts.
So the HUD guidelines, those are federal guidelines, correct?
Yes.
And they cover PH that's funded through HUD?
Yes.
So basically, I mean, owners may terminate tenancy and evict tenants for criminal activity by a covered person if they determine that the covered person has engaged in the criminal activity, regardless of whether the covered person has been arrested or convicted for such activity and without satisfying a criminal conviction standard of proof of the activity. So wouldn't that clause in the HUD guidelines, even if they're not arrested or convicted, it gives the housing authority the ability, the owner, to terminate the tenancy and evict without any arrest or conviction? If you know that you have a troubled tenant in this property, and when we look at troubled tenants under drug abuse and criminal activity, criminal activity, owners may terminate tenancy for any of the following types of criminal activity covered by a covered person, a tenant, household member, guest, or other person under the tenant's control. Any criminal activity that threatens the health, safety, or right to peaceful enjoyment of the premises by other residents, including property management staff residing on the premise. Or any criminal activity that threatens the health, safety, or right to peaceful enjoyment of the residences by persons residing in the immediate vicinity of the premises. Human waste, human feces, syringes, which are biohazards. I think that's impacting. And again, there doesn't have to be an arrest or conviction for the housing authority to execute what HUD is giving you the authority to do. So I don't understand how it could be tied up where you, the authority lies according to the HUD guidelines with the owner.
We're governed, Counsel, we're governed by the courts, the housing court of Massachusetts. We file a lot of cases. We do one-strike, we do lease violations, we do non-payment of rents. When it gets to the judge, the judge makes that decision. And a lot of times, if it's not a serious violent crime, he looks at it as a drug addiction, which he doesn't agree that it goes under the HUD guidelines. So at the end of the day, it's what the judge tells us. You cannot throw them out. They've made us do reasonable accommodations, actually moving troubled people to think it's going to help them out, where they just cause a problem in the building. So our hands are tied because we can only do, when the judge tells us, yes, you can throw that person out. The housing authority moves very quickly to do it. But it's very rare, only because the judges are more, keep giving the tenants a chance. Like I explained this one here, that's a perfect case of what you're talking about, this tenant is doing. And it's been a year and a half and we're still, we'll be in court tomorrow again on it and the judge will make another decision. But until he tells us that we can do it, they have all the rights in the world as a tenant.
And, well, I appreciate the explanation. And as far as the damage to the entrances, the doors and all that, I mean, with 35 cameras on the campus, are you able to tie guests visiting a specific apartment? Because now, I'm sure those doors are costly. I'm sure the damage, the key card programs are costly. Wouldn't that be, again, another, another stance that the housing authority would have to present on, these troubled tenants are bringing individuals that are, as my colleague brought everyone's attention, they're bringing trouble into the property and causing destruction to the property in addition to all of these other things. Does that help to escalate the problem? Because that way, it's not a matter of saying, this person is struggling from substance abuse problems, that's living in this apartment and the housing authority is just trying to get rid of them? This is no. This is bringing A, B, C, D, and E into our building and it's interfering with all of our other residents' quality of life.
Just, I could help, not taking his answer, but in the court system, it's the same thing with Elliott, with if you're renting a house, if I'm renting an apartment off the manager or the solicitor, you have to go through a process. And it's very difficult. It's, it can take up to a year at some point in time. There's multiple chances to remediate before, ahead of time. The old days of just getting somebody else because you don't want them there for a criminal act, those are long gone. It's a lengthy process that you have to, it's show cause, it's motions, it's just, it takes a long time to happen. And all the points that everybody here making up are very valid, but the courts have to decide if someone's getting evicted or not. Nobody else can make that decision other than the courts.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. And I thank you, Mr. Mercia. I know for years, you guys have been operating in a space, providing services to a situation that it's not an easy task. And I'm well aware and it's never rose to this occasion. I think, as was mentioned, it's a combination of multiple things. It's just unfortunate to see that you have federal guidelines set. And as you mentioned, your hands are tied on moving on this. So in the meantime, until we can see some of this start to dissolve, I mean, I would support any efforts that we can as a partner to assist in stepping up the policing or whatever needs to happen in that situation to provide a safe environment for the residents and for your staff as well. Thank you.
Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand very clearly that people have rights, but my philosophy is such that your rights end when you violate mine. That's the way that I see it. I also say, when you look at the whole picture, there's too much leniency with the court system. When I see that the housing authority is following policy, I say, change the policy. Because what we're doing is, we're allowing people to destroy property, to interfere with the comfort and safety and the peaceful wellness of people in the housing, that a peaceful enjoyment in their own safety of their home. This is not proper. This is not the right way to do it. And I'm not, we have a team here, we have the housing authority, we have the police, we have the court system. Something is failing when one of those is giving people a slap on the wrist. There's no authority there. It's like, go ahead, be a good boy or be a good girl, go out and don't do it again. That's not how you bring up a child and that's not how you should bring up society. You should make it such that people are thinking, gee, I can't get away with that. I can't break those locks and try to get into a building that doesn't even belong to me. I know people are mentally ill, they're not on their medication, but they do understand that you have rules and you have to follow. There's no rules that are being enforced here because the policy is too lenient. And it's like, we're not going to solve anything this way unless the rules and policies are changed. What we ought to do is start at the top with the court system and elect the judges this way there that'd probably be held accountable and try to see if the federal government or the state or whatever changes these policies so that perception is, if you think you can get away with it, you're going to do it. But if you know that, gee, I better not do it, I'm going to get in trouble, you got to set a fear or else this, everybody's going to do whatever they want. And that's what's happening right now and it's, it's like a jungle. It's a travesty of justice. I'm sorry to feel like this, but I do. I have compassion, I have compassion that, for people that are down and out on their luck and they want to make something of themselves, they want to get out of the hole that they're in and they want to make something and they want a roof over their head and they're trying to work for it. But if you have a person that is just saying, give me, give me, slap me on the wrist, you're not going to get anywhere and I'm sick of it. And that's what we have here. I'm sick of other communities throwing their people here and having them come over. And I know I'm going to get hell for this tomorrow. You're going to have 70 people here next week coming after me. I don't care because I'm sick of it. I'm sick of it. We're doing everything we can and for what? Because the policy says we got to slap them on the wrist. Well, that's a shame. Everybody's doing their job for what? I'm frustrated. I'm sorry, I'm frustrated.
Counsel Gitchi?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you to Mr. Mercia, if he could come back up to the podium. I do want people to understand, there is a shared commitment here between the city and the housing authority. And there is a goal for all of us, is to try to make the area safe. And the partnership is outlined by Deputy Gendrow when he came here. On October 8th, this motion was filed because of all the calls we get, not only from this property, there's 10 properties, so you get them randomly from everywhere. And in your five-year capital plan, it also outlines how you had concerns, or not you, but the housing authority had concerns on security and safety and things like that and how they were going to invest in. I think we have made progress since October 8th, as Deputy Gendrow had outlined. We're asking that we sit down and have common goals. This is not, and I want to correct Counsel Blanger, this is not the city's responsibility to police the hallways of any housing authority. It's not our, it's not our responsibility. We're a partner. We come when there's calls and we try to do that. So what we're looking at is just a further partnership, maybe send this to the Public Safety Subcommittee and ask the Lowell Housing Authority to come in and say, okay, what do you need from us? What do we need from them? I know that you're working with the manager. And I think you outlined it great, but I have a question. Was there police reports filed on the damage that was done over the weekend?
Yes, actually, by using the cameras, we were looking at videos of the people that did the damage. And they were all street people, homeless or drug-dependent. We give the copies of the stuff and we keep a video of it. And they, over the past month, I believe, two, one guy was charged twice with breaking into the same building twice. Police can answer to that, but they press the charges, they arrest them, they bring them into the courts. That night, he's back again. And so it's a revolving door. Unfortunately, it's very frustrating for us too because we're trying to do, you say, we want our people to be.
It's not frustrating for me because if the police are doing their job, you're doing their job. I can't mandate the court, but if someone keeps going in there over and over again, we're just going to keep arresting. We're okay with that. That's their jobs and they understand that. My point comes down to, if we all can come together and look at your five-year plan and look at the investment you are making, it is not the city's investment to come in and put police officers in your buildings. There's 10 of them. It's not ours. That's on the housing authority to come back to us and say, here's our plan, here's what we're going to work out. And I think, and you said it again, over the last month, after the motion, we have these things. And that's, it took a motion to get to this point. So this body is working hard to get to that point. And it's, you know, it's frustrating for us to keep getting the calls. So in, in the end, I thank Member Elliott for taking my phone call over the weekend. He did highlight his frustration with the courts and everything, as you do. But at the end of the day, I can't weigh everything on the courts. I have to say, how are we preventing these things from happening? Prevention, not just after the fact, say, here's what we're going to do. So that's what all I'm trying to highlight is how do we prevent? How do we move forward? The past is the past. Let's move forward and try to do more prevention. So I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to send this to the Public Safety Subcommittee and invite the housing and also the city manager in that conversation and say, how are we working together? Where is the partnership here? Show.
There was a motion made last week to send this exact same thing to.
Oh, was? Okay.
Another motion.
Yeah.
We haven't met. Yeah. On the subject. So if you want to put it back to the social community, do it again, it's fine.
No, if it's supposed to be there. We just haven't had one in a while, that's all. Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been an ongoing issue, Mr. Mayor, and you indicated just from the podium there that, and the manager, I agree with the managers that we have very good partners with Elliott, the police, you know, have been doing their job. But the one other partner that in the past we usually utilized, many years ago when they have gang issue, is the court. The court. The court keep letting offender out back on the street. So we need to invite the court into this conversation. I said it before, that we need to invite the court into this conversation, how they I said it before, that we need to invite the court into this conversation, how they can help us, when we make the arrests, when the police make the arrests, on the trespassing or whatever that may be. They ought to be conditioned, there's ought to be, they need to hold them accountable, not just making those arrests and then the next day, they back and do it again. And that's the problem we have. So I would say that, you know, going forward, we need to have some conversation, we need to invite the court into this discussion, and maybe the manager can help us do that, because it's important. The presiding judge can have an impact on this discussion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors, all of you. So yeah, that was, we had three of them, three subjects, all concerning the housing authority, or for, I believe it was a neighborhood subcommittee, but the clerk will get that out to us, just so we know which subcommittee it was sent to. What's your response?
Mr. Mayor, would that be the appropriate subcommittee and not the public safety?
It was brought up last week and is voiding unanimously.
Okay, neighborhood? Okay.
Again, I could be wrong, councilor, on the neighborhood one, but I know we referred three separate motions to a subcommittee.
Mr. Mayor, on that topic, Councilor Getchea just brought up to the public safety, would it be possible to make a new motion to add to, add public safety, to have a joint subcommittee meeting, public safety and neighborhood together?
By Councilor Chow, seconded by Councilor Getchea. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section, sorry, Communications City Manager C, 2024, 2025 Warming Center Protocols. Councilor Janess, noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this response, and I appreciate having some codified structure around when we open the warming and cooling shelters. I think having it published is good for everybody to be on the same page and understand what we're looking at. I was a little surprised, reading through it, that it is still a little squishy, and maybe it needs to be, in terms of what the conditions are that would cause it to open. The motion response talks about multiple factors and people making the decision. I was, I was thinking we would have some kind of rubric that says, you know, if we meet X criteria, it causes it to open, versus, versus, you know, having some, having some decisions that be made, versus, you know, it just being black and white hits this. But I think it probably makes sense, and it probably needs to be this way, the more I think about it, because every scenario is going to be a little different, and if you say it has to be X number of days below 32 degrees, and you have one in the middle that's 34, like, then does that cause you not to open the shelter? So I think having the, thinking about it more, having the discretion here is probably the way to go. There are other little questions I have about some of the procedures and, you know, not letting people out and yet not allowing smoking in the building, and, you know, is that going to mean that someone who is a nicotine dependence is now going to not come to the cooling shelter and end up freezing to death, or the warming shelter and end up freezing to death because they need a cigarette at 10 o'clock at night? I don't think anybody wants to see that, so I don't know how we square that circle and figure that out, but I do understand the need to have some of these restrictions in place. I think we need to really kind of watch this closely and be willing to adjust as, as we get through the winter, as the cold settles in, and as we figure out what works, what doesn't. You know, we've, we've talked before about having these, setting, going through the effort of setting them up and not having anyone come. Part of the reason why people may not come is some of these restrictions, right? So if we have to change them so that people actually use the resources we're providing, I think that's a consideration we have to make. As long as we're not doing it in a way that endangers the people who are using the services or our staff or anything like that. But I think it's important we keep an eye on this and we are willing to change to meet the needs here. But thank you for this. I think this is a good first step and puts us going in the right direction.
Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager and your team for, now it's a little more clear that we have the procedures in place. I do agree, to some extent, that, you know, you do make the call in term of, you know, when the warming stations be opened, and, you know, the criteria that you have, is a good, is a good criteria, but also I think stew is evolving, you know, on conditions of the people, whether or not, you know, the need, as Councilor Janess has indicated. So I'll leave it to you, because you already have, already, you have very, almost clear procedures in place already to address and to help those during the winter time and/or summertime when it's too hot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One other quick thing, which I forgot to mention, is just, the only location referenced here is the Senior Center, which I think it makes sense that that's the space, but also we've seen the impact that, that needing to open this can have on the Senior Center's ability to fulfill their programming. So I think we need to continue to look at options, and if there's any other facilities that might be able to be adapted to this in the future, I think we need to keep that on the radar as well. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much. We will remain flexible, but I think just putting this down in writing is most important. And thank you for that, the ability. The, the second piece is, we are, we are talking about another potential location, so there are discussions going on. This is just in this particular manner, we figured it was wise to put it out today.
Great. Councilor Dakota.
I was asking if we could suspend the rules to take 7.2 out of order.
Councilor Dakota takes 7.2 out of order, seconded by Councilor Mercier. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 7.2. Ordinance, pending zoning extension, TTF Zone 71 North Perret Road, given the first reading, a motion to refer to Planning Board for report recommendation to a public hearing on December 10th, 2024, by Councilor Dakota, seconded by Councilor Chow. All in favor, say aye. Opposed.
Can we get a roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Yes. Councilor Mercier.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
No.
Council Yum. Council Blangia.
Yes.
I didn't hear.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getchea.
No.
Motion passes. Roll call passes. Returning to Agenda 5.2, information reports. Information report, HEROES Act Motor Vehicle Excise Tax Resumption. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, councilors. You've all, we've talked about this, as administrations talked about this. I think this is obviously vitally important, given that November 11th is right around the corner, and I know that we're all going to be honoring all of our veterans in every way possible, and I think it's an opportunity with this HEROES Act to, to show the gratitude and reflect and simply appreciate our veterans, you know, the fact that some folks are 100% disabled, or if they're unemployed, they're unemployable due to their injuries. I do have our chief assessor here to explain any direct questions about it, but our assessor's office has done a fabulous job, and I believe everybody here would say that, with the explanation and trying to make this as easy as possible for our veterans. And I thought that bringing this forward at this time, something that we could all celebrate around and say thank you once again to the men and women who consistently have put their, their lives on the line to, to help us, and that's our veterans. But if anyone has any direct questions about the order of operations, how this is done, Ellen, Ms. Brudow is here to discuss.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the administration for putting this together. I think this is a good step for taking care of our veterans in the ways that we can. My only request here is that we make sure that the Veteran Services Office is, is looped in here so that they can get this information out, and as well as any other local veterans organizations that we can partner with, just make sure we disseminate the information to them so they can make sure their members are informed, so folks can take advantage of, of this. Thank you.
Councilor Scott.
Just a quick comment. I think this is a wonderful program that they've put in place, but my question is, just so people know if we're going to put this out informational-wise, active service veterans are exempt from excise tax now, correct?
I'm so sorry, I didn't.
Are active service, are they exempt from excise tax now?
They, there's a, so through you, to the counselor, they, active service members who are stationed in other, so yes, there's, there's very expanded rules, but the majority of an active service member, depending on their time out of the state, is exempt from motor vehicle excise.
Okay. I just wanted to put that out there, because I think a lot of people are unaware of that, though, that are serving right now, so.
And they do, we, we get quite a lot of them, and I always find the Veterans Agent over, he's excellent at referring people to us to take care of that for.
And those exemptions are listed on the website as well, that people can easily see that, what they qualify for?
Yes, we, we have them on the website for mostly real estate. The motor vehicle is a little more defined, and we typically refer people to the veteran, the actual, for example, Fort Devens has a fabulous outline of everything, so we refer them to those documents, only because things are ever-changing for that. This, this new HEROES Act, it makes it a lot easier for a disabled veteran to get that exemption on his motor vehicle excise, and we just wanted to get the word out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. More good stuff. 5.2, second information report, front-runner community initiative invitation to Toronto. And this is something I spoke of a couple meetings ago, being in Toronto in September, I ran into a couple organizations that, they have a front-runner community initiative that the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Baez-Rose will speak about in a second, but they came to us looking to see what they could do to help assist with areas such as homelessness, downtime revitalization, housing, et cetera. I thought it was a very worthwhile conversation to pass on to the manager's office and to our DPD department. They have taken it from there, and I will pass it along to our Assistant City Manager, she can expound upon it a little bit, if there are any questions that can be asked now. Ms. Baez-Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, once we were introduced to the concept of a front-runner city community, I sort of started some initial research. The, the program right now is centered in, in Canada. There are Canadian cities that have this designation already. The, the Urban Economy Forum is actually interested in expanding this program more in North America and looking for American cities to, to participate. So at the end of the day, the, the idea of a front-runner city is that they're working towards equitable and sustainable development, which I think is very consistent, you know, with our ongoing work. The more I looked into it, the more I felt like we're already doing a lot of things that align with this program. There is a formal commitment on behalf of the community to sort of commit resources, people resources, and the effort to collect data, you know, so there, there's like a whole kind of commitment the community makes. But again, just based on the things that we're committing to do, we're, we're kind of doing a lot of those things already. Things like in our Lowell Forward Master Plan, in our Housing Production Plan Goals, the fact that we've created a Sustainability Division, and are doing a lot of green sort of investments in our municipal buildings and our parks and open spaces. So, you know, all of that is very consistent with the Sustainable Development Goal Number 11, which is the one that's targeted specifically, it's a United Nations goal that's targeted specifically by this program. You know, the, the communities that they're sort of offering to show us are participating communities in areas that had been struggling, as the mayor said, with things like homelessness, you know, long-term disinvestment. And we just figured it would be an opportunity to learn more about the program, understand how it kind of works in more detail, see, see the kind of the proof and the pudding in action, really. And then also try to learn more on the ground about, you know, the, the exact level of commitment. This isn't a financial commitment on behalf of the city, it's really like us committing to the ideals of this program and committing to collectively work towards these things together. And so it seems really intriguing with our plans anyway, and, and sort of thought that, you know, we should jump on an opportunity to, I think, worst-case scenario, we're, we're getting Lowell's name out on a global platform and talking about and expressing our interest in sustainable development in the future, which I, I sort of don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Assistant City Manager for doing a little bit more research on it and so forth, and like she spoke of, when we sat down and spoke in Toronto, they gave us a list of, you know, 12, 13 things that we have to do in order to even qualify to look into the program. And, you know, from my, you know, limited knowledge of what we do do, it seems like a lot of things that they presented, we already are involved in those, we have been involved in those for years. You know, we talked about the MBTA zoning, the JAM Plan, how it's going on over at the train station now, the revitalization of UMass Lowell and the Link project, so, you know, a lot of the things that they were very keen on and excited about partnering with the city, and like Ms. Baez-Rose said, that there's no financial commitment whatsoever. The one thing that they did ask was total and complete buy-in by the council, and that's why they really stressed, the more councils that could attend, the better. They did have, you know, certain cities that, you know, they didn't have at least a handful of elected officials show up, you know, they wasn't sure what to go forward with, right? So, you know, I know we have at least four of us now with the city manager and Ms. Baez-Rose going, so, you know, we're going to have a vote next week, pull it back just to get the right correct number of, the dollar amount, but if there's any way that people could, could attend, I think it'd be very beneficial. We're going to see three different areas, that were very downtrodden up in that area, that they've been totally revitalized, and they look terrific now. You know, something as simple as, you know, splash pads and, you know, music and Adirondack chairs, all the way up until, you know, hotels that, that they assisted in building, and facilities to, to house homeless people that they took part in and assist. So, you know, there's no promises of money that can come to the city, but as Ms. Baez-Rose did say, if, if we check the boxes and we're all in, you know, we could be on the precipice of, of a lot of money coming in to help aid us. They really were impressed by the diversity of Lowell, you know, and speaking to the forum, you know, spoke about the 60 different languages at Lowell High School, and all the, just some of the, you know, as simple as the flag rigging that we do, honoring different cultures and backgrounds. It really sounded like they liked the cut of our jib, right? So hopefully, you know, we can make this work, and, you know, like I said, we're going to do it next week. If any councilors have any questions, please reach out to me or to the manager or Ms. Baez-Rose, and if you can go, and I know it's, you know, it's during the week and that's difficult as well, but I would really, you know, ask that, you know, you make the effort to do so. I think it's going to be very beneficial to the city, and I'm very hopeful for a positive outcome. Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kudos to you for jump-starting this in the, in the work of Ms. Baez and her staff. In looking into this a little bit more, as, as some people would say, this could be a potential game changer for the city of Lowell. And if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Baez, we would be the only city in the United States.
That is correct.
That is correct. This could be a financial windfall if it does come to fruition, and I am looking forward to the trip. I'm, it, it, to me, if the, if we checked the checklist, and we've checked quite a bit of these boxes, I think it just shows that Lowell is probably one of the most diversified cities in the United States, and that's why those boxes are checked. And once again, Mr. Mayor, thanks for jump-starting this. Thank you very much.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to echo Councilor Dakota's thoughts. Thank you for getting the ball rolling on this, and thank you to the administration for your work in pushing this forward. I think this is a very exciting opportunity for the city, and it once again shows that, that Lowell is a leader, and Lowell, Lowell can do big things, bold things, to, to try and improve the city, try and improve the lives of our residents, and try to be a model for the region and the country. I hope that this is an extremely fruitful partnership, and, and, you know, there's a lot of good that can come out of this. I really wish I could go on the trip. Unfortunately, I have some work things that I cannot get out of, and so I'm going to be stuck watching from afar. If you want to FaceTime me, Mr. Mayor, as you're walking around, I would appreciate it. That's about as much as I can do, unfortunately.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying thank you for bringing this forward. I think I personally would encourage, anytime you get the opportunity to go elsewhere, venture out and see what they have done, what's working, I think it's a great opportunity. Some of the key points, even in the informational piece, that stood out to me, I mean, these areas you guys are going to go see has seen significant revitalization. The city of Lowell, I mean, ourselves, it's, how much revitalization have we seen over the past 50 years? the past 50 years, 60 years? So I think it's a perfect fit with that piece. I also like how they've, investments have been leveraged from private and public and that's something that, again, this administration and the administration before, this council has something that's been encouraged. Create a Lowell Community Foundation, they've been a great partner with private-public leveraging funds. So I think that this is a good trip and I hope you guys bring back some solid information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like I said, there was a vote on for tonight, but we're going to take that back and we'll do it again next week. And like I said, if, you know, if anybody can figure it out, great. If not, just speaks to the Manager and to Ms. Baez-Rose, you know, we will be doing a couple of Zooms in the evening to talk about the day and how it went, so those Consuls can chime in that way. And any ideas that you may have before we go, please let us know. Section 6, votes to the City Managers, a motion by Consul Noon to bundle 6-1 and 6-4, seconded by Consul Mercier. Consul Noon.
I'm going to recuse myself on 6-2, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, 6-2, yeah.
You got it, okay. 6-1, vote to accept master in law, chapter 59, section 22, G and H, section 2, accept and expend $11,500, Adder's Revocation Program Grant, 6-3, accept and expend $420,000 flap grant, and 6-4, transfer $78,000 from sale of city property amount. And we need a motion to adopt by Consul Janess, seconded by Consul Gitcher. We'll do a roll call first, Mr. Clerk, on 6-2, then we'll do the other three. So 6-2 will be first.
6-2.
6-2, correct. Consul Noon.
Yes, sir.
Consul Janess.
Yes.
Consul Mercier.
Yes.
Consul Noon.
Yes.
Consul Robinson.
Yes.
Consul Rourke.
Yes.
Consul Scott.
Yes.
Consul Yem.
Yes.
Consul Belanger. Consul Chow.
Yes.
Consul Dakota.
Yes.
Consul Gitcher.
Yes.
6-1, 6-3, 6-4, Mr. Clerk.
Consul Janess.
Yes.
Consul Mercier.
Yes.
Consul Noon.
Yes.
Consul Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Consul Scott.
Yes.
Consul Yem. Consul Belanger. Consul Chow.
Yes.
Consul Dakota.
Yes.
Consul Gitcher.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Consul Mercier.
On 6.4, through you to the city manager, it's 78,000 to do some soil sampling in the Hamilton Canal District. How did we derive the number 78,000? Did that go out to bid? How do we get that price?
Ms. Rose.
We solicited quotes from a firm directly and that's what they estimated the cost would be.
Does that include boat parcels 15 and 16 for that price?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Subcommittee reports, section 8, 8.1, Campus Control Subcommittee, October 29th, 2024, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you. There's not much to report. A couple of things, because it's an ongoing conversation, a couple of things though that stand out, that stood out from the meeting was a couple of motions. We have a motion by Consul Mercier that was seconded by Consul Noon to request the city manager provide balance of the fund established through the cannabis industry fees. So that was something that, you know, for the future conversations, we'd be looking for. And also there was a motion made by Consul Robinson, myself, seconded by Consul Noon to provide updates on the drafting of delivery ordinance regarding the cannabis industry. We did receive, I hope my colleagues received the copy of the updated HCA, Host Community Agreement, that was at work. And I'm looking through it, it's still, I believe, has the existing outdated, somewhat outdated language of the 3% fee. So I think that's something we also have to take a look at, is updating that with the best practices and standards with the commission. So I would, if my colleagues have anything else to add, if not, I'd like to.
Motion to accept a place as a report, progress by Consul Robinson, seconded by Consul Noon, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 8-2 will take next week, Consul, on November 12th. 8-3, inspector, wire inspector reports, number one, Boston Gas DBA National Grid requesting installation of a rectifier and an old bed for gas main protection along a near, in near 69 Merrows Ave. Section number two, Boston Gas DBA National Grid requesting installation of replacement gas main on Vernon Street from 6th Street to Bennett Street. And third, Boston Gas National Grid requesting installation of gas service line for parking and garage at 330 Jackson Street. Comments?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Consul Noon, seconded by Consul Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Nine petitions, 9.1, one claim for property damage. Motion to refer to law enforcement for a report, recommendation by Consul Robinson, seconded by Consul Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 9-2, Boston Gas National Grid requesting upgrade of existing gas main along Barrisford Avenue. First ring, we need a motion to refer a public hearing on November 19th, 2024, by Consul Dakota, seconded by Consul Chow. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Announcements, Consul Mercier.
First announcement is Veterans Day. The Lowell Veterans Center invites you to honor those who served. The event will be Friday, November 8th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, rain or shine. The location is the Veterans Memorial Park at 150 Douglas Road. And the next item that I wanted to make an announcement about is, we had a subcommittee this evening that Consul Gitcher will report on next week, but one of the people that spoke was a nonprofit. It was Larry Finn and he was talking about Coats from Anne-Abev. They're having an event on Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 at 99 Moody Street, which is Engine and Ladder 3 across from the library, behind the library. And any donation would be possible, would help the firefighters, Larry Finn and his team, to buy jackets for the people that need it. You can't even imagine, just because you have a jacket, that you think everybody has a jacket, but they don't. There's a few people that go to Lowell High School that are students and they are homeless, believe it or not, in this day and age. It is hard to believe, but it is true. So if anybody can make it and give a donation on Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 in the morning, 99 Moody Street, the fire station, Engine and Ladder 3. Thank you very much.
You got it, Consul. Consul Robinson.
Thank you. I just wanted to make an announcement. Last night, we had the Centerville Neighborhood Action Group meeting and I have to say, first, thank you, DPD, thank you to the city offices that sent a representative, wastewater, we had the traffic engineer in attendance, CDM Smith, Duck Island Treatment. Amazing presentation. It had to be summarized because we were limited on time with undertaking and again, I think they drove some very key, important facts home to the neighborhood. This is probably going to be the largest undertaking of infrastructure improvements since at least 1980. And it's going to be a multi-year, multi-three-phase, I believe, project for Centerville with so much coordination involved, it's unbelievable. I mean, between coordinating with utility companies to move what they have to move before we can do what we have to do on our end, and then when we go to put it back together, that's a whole nother coordination required while coordinating to mitigate the impact to our residents. So, I mean, I have to say though, the brief summary we got last night in the neighborhood meeting, I'm confident that you have a great team assigned to this project and I think we'll get through it. There's going to be some growing pains, don't get me wrong. And residents, we are going to need your patience and understanding, but we have great people that are assigned to this task and I'm looking forward to future presentations and bringing in more of my neighbors in Centerville to really fully explain the full scope of this project. So, thank you very much.
Consul Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the city council and the city administration, I want to take this opportunity to thank all those involved in the election process today. I want to thank all the voters who came out, practiced, exercised their duties and democracy. I want to thank the wonderful poll workers, the volunteers, the city staff and all the police officers who were present, who worked behind the scene, front the scene on the ground to make the election today very, very smooth, very efficient and very safe and welcoming to everybody. So kudos to everyone involved. Thank you.